Correct.
So.
Sure.
So you're saying that this year's budget's only $200,000 more than last year?
On the expense side, yes. So I've been working on this and I've been going through line item by line and I'm trying to see what is budgeted that we're not spending money on, where we can have savings. I looked at all the jet packs. That's an issue that there are savings involved there. Cell phones, copiers, we got a new contract. So I'm going through, I'm not done yet by any means. There's still a lot more work to be done, but right now that's where we're sitting.
You just said it's benefits, that's not salaries.
That includes salaries. That's everything.
That includes everything?
Yes. Yes. There is a little, because there's some fluff in this budget for this year. There is money that I don't really know what was budgeted for on certain items, so I've removed them because they haven't been spent in two years. So I removed that budgeted item.
She's got her pencil out. Or maybe regularly.
Well, I mean, I know we've seen things like the copier, for example. That's a huge savings.
Correct.
And we've had others that have, that we've become aware of and that we've voted on. So I understand that. I just, I will say I was shocked. That's.
It does. I was shocked too, because that's not what I expected, because we had a big increase in the health insurance and then with all the salaries and everything increasing to the next step or the next level, I really thought our expenses would have increased a lot more. But we have gone through the technology and got rid of duplicate programs, so we're looking at everything.
But at the same time, it is only April.
Correct. Absolutely. And yeah, and I'm still, I'm still looking through stuff, so I don't know what I'll come back to you with in June. It will be adjusted.
And we still have other expenses coming.
Right.
So that 200,000 is almost less than a half of a percent increase.
It is. It's a .4 or 5%.
.006.
Pardon me?
.006.
Oh, I calculated as .45. The next one, the next slide is just, it's the same comparison with revenues. What we have, what I'm proposing for '23-'24, what we budgeted for '22-'23, and what we actually received in the four previous years. So the revenues are also actually going down, because I did over-budget local revenue this year. So you're only going down by like 130,000. It's not, it's not a huge swing. Then the next slide is just your pie chart that just shows you relatively. So you can see where everything follows. Your salaries and your benefits, or 66% of your budget overall, then another 6% is your debt service. So you have 72% fixed costs, and then your others are your transportation, your technology, your other day-to-day operating expenses. So the next one is the expenditure highlights. So these are the things that are making the difference, making differences to the expenses. We're still going to contract with CCL for the student help desk. That is working well. We have our fair share of E-rate is 80,000, I believe. Mike, is that correct? The paper I had is 80,600 is our fair share of E-rate. Sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Okay.
I got numbers in my head too. They probably just started really good.
So this budget also includes replacement Chromebooks for the fifth and eighth grade class. We're updating interactive smartboards in the buildings. There's a total of 44 for all four buildings. They'll each get a portion based on the schedule that Mike created, who is in the most need and getting a rotation to do that. Our health insurance did increase by 14%. Our dental increased by 5%. And the Western Area CTC gave us a preliminary budget and yet that increased by $105,000. So all that being said, it's very shocking that there's not that much of an increase on our expenses.
So 14% of the healthcare costs, what's that number add up to?
The total effect on the district's about 500,000.
And we had thought that might come in at like 8, 8.5, so that is really way off from where.
Well, no, the projections I got were 18, so it's a little less. But the last projection I got in January was 18%.
Yeah, but prior to that, they were guessing. It could be as high as 12, I think they said. And then, but they were thinking 8, 8.5, and then in January, we're like, oh, no, no, no.
18 to 20.
Yeah.
And now, and it worked out to be 14.
Which I guess we're supposed to be happy that it's not 18 to 20.
I don't think anybody's happy, but I am happy that they're not cutting benefits, because that would be a way for them to decrease the percentage increase, would be to cut benefits to the staff, so I'm glad they're not doing that. 14% is a hefty increase, though. So my next slide is just some general information. It gives you the overall of the employer health, or I'm sorry, the employer piece portion. It's actually going down. So if you remember back in '09 and '10, it was 4.78%, and it has increased to 35.26% of every dollar that we pay a person. That's what we have to pay into their retirement. That is the rate this year. Next year, it's dropping to 34%. I mean, it's only a percent decrease, but it's something. And the government did propose his '23-'24 budget. The basic ed funding, he projected McGuffey to receive an increase of $499,000. I'm not really sure where it stands, when it will be passed. So in this budget, I include 75% of that number. I did the same with the special ed allotments and all of that, 75%.
Because they never passed theirs before. We have to pass ours.
No. And they very rarely pass at 100%, but it's a new governor, so I'm not sure. This budget also include, we were approved for an exception, a special education exception on the budget of $251,000. That equates to .2672 mils, and that is included in my revenue numbers. So revenue is tentatively budgeted at $34,355,695. Expenditures are budgeted at $35,599,735, which gives us a projected deficit of 1.244 million.
And that's with a tax increase to the index.
To the index with the exception.
With the exception. When will we be able to, and I know you're still working, and I understand it's April, but when will we get an idea of what it looks like for the three different scenarios? Like no tax increase to the index, to the.
My plan of action is to continue to go through my expenses and drill down on those as much as I can, and hopefully I'll get some movement on the governor's budget to know what the revenue would really be, and then I'll be able to give you examples. I can give you those in May. I can have those ready for you at the May board meeting. I just won't be here to present them. So if you want, I can email them to you.
I would know about the rest of the board, but I'd like to have that.
Okay. I can email you the three projections. No tax increase to the index, and then index with the referendum. I can email that out. So the next slide is just the fund balance scenario. And this is all based on 2021 information, because I still don't have final numbers from 2022. So the current budget deficit is 1.244 million. Opposed expenditure increases are less than a half of a percent. The preliminary budget does include the referendum exception, and it does include the 5.3% in Act 1 index increase on taxes. So I talked fast. Do I have, do you have questions?
Yeah. With that tax increase and the exemption, what are we talking per household income tax increase?
I didn't calculate that. I don't know. One mil of revenue is 984,000, so that referendum is 257. I don't know how, I don't know off the top of my head. I will figure that out and email it to you, though.
Let me try and understand this, because something's not making sense. We had an increase just only in healthcare, 14%, which is a half a million dollars. So in all actuality, we're coming in at minus 300,000 from last year's budget.
Yes. There were a lot of technology items that were in this budget for this year, '22-'23 twice. So I removed them once, and then we removed duplicates on top of that. So I had like, I don't know, 1.2% savings over, 120% of savings over what we budgeted this year for technology.
All right.
I don't even know. It's odd to me that we don't have the auditor's report back, like, and he's pushed it back twice. Is there something we can do on our end to push him, I mean, like, to get that to us? Yeah, like, I don't understand.
My response this time was it's tax season and they're very busy, so he's going to have to push me off till May. I do think our contract was up in '22, so I do have to research that a little bit more. I just didn't have time when I was getting this. I wanted to have that done.
To my knowledge, this is the first time that we've had them.
They've never.
Late with it.
I know that they have lost some staff and they have not replaced them, so I do know that they are behind, and we are not the only one that has not had their budget or their audit presented or passed yet. Not that that's acceptable, but.
So are we using fund balance to balance the budget, or?
1.244 is what you'd need to balance the budget from fund balance, right now.
And our fund balance right now is somewhere around 2.4 million?
No, those together, 4.8. 4.87.
And I know I always ask this, because what does the state require of us to have a fund balance of?
It can be between 8%, no more than 8%.
No more than 8. We've, I don't know that, since I've been on the board, I don't think we've ever been close to 8%.
Isn't it between 5 and 8?
They want us to have a balance of that, so we're going to be below that, then.
You're going to be below that? I mean, eventually, yes.
It's 8% between 5 and 8 of our total budget? Is that what it is?
It's the average you should have in fund balance.
Yes.
So what's the minimum we can have in fund balance?
So that's, I guess that's, that's the way I should have phrased it. What's the bottom line number we're allowed to have?
There is a bottom line number. You cannot have more than 8%.
Right. I would agree with that.
Unless it is reserved for something, so there's, so you can, so you have assigned and unassigned. So if your unassigned balance is less than 8%, you can have money in that assigned balance if it's tagged to building improvements or.
Capital expenditure.
Yes.
Okay. So just so I'm understanding this, we can't have more than 8%, but there's no minimum requirement?
Correct. That's.
Okay.
But the recommendation for a, is somewhere between 5 and 8? Is that correct?
Unassigned, unassigned fund balance, yes.
Okay. And we're going to be approximately where? What percent?
4.8.
4.8?
I didn't calculate that either.
No. That's what we have in fund balance now, 4.8.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you're at 4.8 right now and you use 1.2 of that, you'll have 3.6 if this budget passes, just as it is and everything goes.
But we don't know, like, what percentage that is.
I can tell you what percentage it is.
I would like to know.
See, that's still 10%. That's still 10%. Your assigned balance will go down.
It will have to go down if it can't be any more than 8, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Oh, okay.
I don't understand how we was using all of our fund balance, and we was still in the hole the last time we reviewed this, and now we're only 1.2 and we'll still have 3.6 fund balance left. Where did it come from or what happened? No, I mean, the last time that we presented the budget.
In January, I pulled all of the expenses from this year and all of the increases, and I projected the increase in health insurance for 20%. I didn't go through anything. I didn't do increases to revenue because I didn't have it.
So it was like a worst-case scenario?
Yes.
And since then, you've been going kind of line item by line item? Thank you.
What was the large line items, like $100,000, $500,000?
We had technology in there. There was technology in there for 121 on them, 76 on another that was double budgeted. So those were both removed. There were people in there in the salary side of it that don't work here anymore. There was the coaches and the student activities. There were lump sum totals put in there, and they added up to a lot more than what we were actually paying the people. So I updated all that. Now they're all budgeted per employee, so I can tell you who's making what, how much they're getting paid to do it, instead of it just being a total of $100,000 for 10 coaches. So that would have made a lot on salary and benefit side of it.
Thank you.
By the way, Deb is not here in the next board meeting because her daughter's graduating from University of Tennessee.
Well, congratulations on that. I appreciate all your work with the university. I really do.
Kenny, you've been on the board a long time. I'm going to ask you too. Tunnel Ridge Coal Mine is now underneath mining in Upper District. Should we be getting something from that? And should we need to contact, who would Deb need to contact to find out if we are, if we're not, why not?
We should be, but the problem was when we did the reassessment, they moved everything to Green County. And so all the coal's coming out in Green County. I think we'd need a legal expert to tell us if they're mining underneath of us but taking it out of Green County, who gets the.
Well, they'd be taken out of West Virginia.
Yeah, that would not be Green County.
It's not Green County. They're in West, they're.
But I thought that was in Donegal Township.
There is some there, but if they're removing it above the ground, they're taking it out, but that's where you're going to get the money. That's what we were just told in township.
They are near, we're Millikins.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Which is clearly McGuffey District. So how do we research, I mean, like, who do we contact to find out?
We had a specialist that, we'd have to look back and see. He was a mineral specialist that told us how much we was going to be able to save and gain based on coal evaluations, and it ended up he being totally wrong. We're worse off now than what we was before.
So is this something that our solicitor can look into?
I don't know. Can you look?
We can start. Yeah, I mean, I think we have to.
I just sent a map to Doc because they just applied to the EPA.
Right.
Right.
To mine into Donegal underneath, part of it underneath, would go underneath Interstate 70. Console is the one that kind of, but since I've been on the board, $1.6 million we've lost in coal revenue from Console deactivating coal fields.
Right.
I mean, these people are in here in Pennsylvania taking coal out right now.
Right.
I don't know that we can go after them for.
Anything before.
The new, the new portal that they're putting in right there at the bridge where you're talking about, that was Bus McAdoo's property, that's huge. And we just checked about that, and we were told it's all being sent out where it will come out on the West Virginia side.
We being Donegal Township.
Yes.
Okay.
Our district townships.
I think what we need to figure out is where it comes out, is that where the taxes go. It don't seem right, because I know the oil and gas is not that way. But I have no idea about coal. Maybe they have a special legislation agreement or something. I don't know.
I don't know.
But it should be, if you're coming out underneath our district, we should be getting revenue from it.
So we're good with directing our solicitor to start looking into that?
Since it's a non-renewable resource, once it's gone, it's gone.
Well, I remember when, before I was, before I was on the board, we were flush with coal revenue.
Yes.
And at that time, I think it was Frank Zaly was our business manager, and he was saying, get what you can get now, because when they, once they're done mining, it's gone. You'll lose that.
Can I get the map?
You want to show the map?
Great, thank you.
It was an article in the paper, by the way, that they've applied to the EPA for that.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Another problem that we've had is Console owns almost 50% of entire McGuffey School District land. I don't know if everybody knows that.
Yeah, and it's clean and green.
Yeah, they tear every house down and it's clean and green.
Right.
I would suggest that we try and work with Console somehow, maybe set up a meeting and find out what we can do to work together, because in the past, it's always been an adversarial relationship, which has gotten us nowhere. So maybe if we try to become friends, we could do something. I mean, that was the main reason we sued the county to do a tax reset, was the coal assessment. And it didn't work.
No, and they really have been for several years to the point where when they purchase them, they just raise the house immediately.
And then turn to clean and green, which takes it off the tax book.
Right.
That's why we're.
It also prevents, I mean, you're talking about, when you're talking about enrollment, you know, there's not a family then moving in there, even to rent or whatever. So it's like a two-edged sword.
And both of them are cutting us.
So do we have anyone who has a contact, like a connection with them?
With Console?
The.
That's what I'm wondering, like networking, when you're talking, when you're talking about making nice and like, do we, do we have any kind of a network with them?
We had a student here whose mother was the CFO.
She doesn't work there anymore.
A while ago, but she doesn't work there now.
Yeah, that's actually range.
Yeah, but you need somebody from Console, and you need somebody high, and I don't know who that would be.
Is it possible to maybe explore our connections with Range to see if they could branch out and help us network with Console? I don't know. I mean, what are we out?
The oil and gas company and.
Yeah, let's try it.
Historically, the oil and gas company and the coal company hate each other.
That's just ridiculous.
Well, it's true.
Yeah, the same, the same coal company wanted to come up underneath Dutch Fork, hand up underneath Placerville Sportsman's Club.
Yep.
The problem is Placerville Sportsman's Club has a gas storage facility underneath that belongs to Columbia Gas, and then they've also got, Range also has seven or eight wells going down right through there too.
Several years ago, before the Marcella Shell became real popular, Console and other coal companies, not only them, went around trying to get one acre leases for methane gas, and it was a perpetual lease. So if they got a one acre perpetual lease, what they was trying to do was block the oil and gas companies from going where they was going to mine. And they tied that one acre up so they couldn't drill.
We learned that hindsight. Yes, thank you. Nice sharp pencil. I'm sure that's one half for a razor.
10 minutes?
Ten.
Ten. Okay. So at this time, we will end the meeting at 6:37, and we will reconvene with the regular monthly meeting at 6:50.
Thank you.
Okay, we go home to order the regularly scheduled board meeting for April 20th, 2023 at 6:51 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haynes.
Present.
Mr. Morgan. Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Kern.
Present.
Mr. Leach.
Here.
Ms. Livehart.
Present.
Mr. Ross. Ms. Schingle.
Present.
Mr. Manada.
Here.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have middle school students' recognitions.
Good evening. I'm Dan Syvak. I'm the assistant principal of the middle school.
One second, please.
Ma'am, you can come right up here if you want. Come on.
Thank you. So it's an honor to present our March Student of the Month and our April Student of the Month today. This award is voted on by our middle school faculty, and the students chose and embody our core values at the middle school inside the classroom and outside the classroom. So without further ado, our March Student of the Month is Emily Smith. Emily is the daughter of Chris and Melissa Smith. Her hobbies include basketball and reading books. Her favorite class is math. Her favorite teacher is Mrs. Marashoff, who is her math teacher. And advice that she would give to other middle school students to win this award is stay on task and do what you're supposed to do. Great advice.
Yes.
So our April Student of the Month is Josh Rustmizel. Josh is the son of Kevin and Becky Rustmizel. His hobby, his favorite hobby, is playing golf with the Southwestern Pennsylvania Junior Golf Tour. His favorite, uh, his favorite class is math with Mr. Myers, but his favorite teacher is Mrs. Becker for his history class. So his advice for middle school students to win Student of the Month would be try to keep your grades up by working hard. Good job, Josh.
Congratulations, congratulations.
And this concludes our middle school presentation for Student of the Month.
Thank you. Congratulations to them and their families. Student, high school student council representative?
How's everybody doing tonight?
How about you?
I'm doing pretty good. Um, so I'm just here to update you guys on what's been going on in the school recently. Our seniors at Western Area in general agriculture and agricultural mechanics and engineering technologies are taking the NOTD assessment this week. Students currently enrolled in our 12 AP placement courses have completed their mock exams and will be beginning to take their final exams the first two weeks in May. Those mock exams were not the fun. They were not fun. Our prom is next Friday at the Doubletree in the Meadows with over 220 attendees. Grand March will be in the high school gym starting at 5:30. You guys are all invited, by the way. McGuffey Agricultural Program partnered with employees at Range Resources last week to construct sheep feeders for the upcoming ruling, running of the woo competition on May 6th, sponsored by the Washington Business District Authority and the Farmers Market in Washington. Two current McGuffey High School students will be joining a long list of McGuffey Eagle Scouts in May, those being Wyatt Coburn and Isaiah Dale, who will be inducted on May 6th. The Senior Day of Caring will be held on May 5th at our campus. For the first time ever, we will be partnering with the American Cancer Society for McGuffey High School Relay for Life. During the school day, teams McGuffey seniors and faculty will be walking the track, playing games, and raising awareness for cancer research. This school event will be held by the community, uh, sorry. This school event will be held by the community event later that evening. Our school is excited to reestablish and begin the tradition of the Senior Day of Caring for the American Cancer Society. Now some sports updates. We've had an incredible spring season for all of our sports. Baseball is currently four and one in the section with a big game tonight at Greensburg Salem, and they're eight and three overall. The opportunity to win the section is a true reality with a lineup that includes six sophomores and one freshman. Softball is also having a breakout season with their record being six and three and three and two in the section. A return to the playoffs is a reality for them as well, and a home game is even a brighter possibility with a team that only has three seniors. Boys tennis competed, they completed their regular season with a two and four record and was very competitive. We competed in every match but two and had an overall of five and six in our singles and doubles, one individual matches in sections, and single and doubles. Track, both our boys and girls finished as runner-up in the section to South Park and qualified for the WPIL team playoffs. The boys lost in a heartbreaker yesterday, seventy-six to forty, or to seventy-four for the section title. Individually, we would advance as many as sixteen to the WPIL individual finals. Our last recognition is Riley Dunn for WPIL rifle championship and Brian Scoop Goseby for the boys soccer coach of the year. He will be honored at the Tri-County ADs at the banquet on Sunday, April 30th at 2:00 PM in the South Point Hilton. That's all. You guys have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you, guys.
She did a very good job speaking.
Thank you. At this time, we will have public participation on agenda items.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, there's just one person this evening, Monique Frye, about policy 201.
Thank you. Ms. Frye, if you, when you get up here, remember to let us know your township.
Good evening, Monique Frye from Morris Township. And, um, I touched on policy 201 a little bit. I don't, maybe it was last school board meeting. I'm trying to remember now. Everything's running together lately. I think the only problem that I see with the, the policy 201 is that it's going to be made to be a requirement for students to have testing done before entering a grade earlier than the age five or age six for kindergarten and first grade at the, at the parent's expense or at the family's expense. Um, I don't necessarily disagree with it being the family or parent's responsibility. But I don't think that something like this should be required. I think if a parent's choosing to enter their student into the school earlier, there should be a way that it, it would be optional for them to have that testing completed. It goes back to parental consent and parental rights. We shouldn't have to subject our children to that kind of testing for them to receive the education earlier. I think it should be up to the parents to decide on whether or not that is something that their, their child should require. So I'm asking you to either not pass the policy as it's written or to add verbiage that would not require parents to have this testing done, but for it to be an option. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 16th, 2023 school board meeting as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And I may need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from March 16th to April 20th, 2023, check number seven seven three five five to seven seven five one six in the amount of $1,194,646.36 as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated April 20th, check numbers seven six eight nine to seven six nine four in the amount of $91,186.79 as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the Treasury's report, treasurer's report for the month of March 2023 as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the GOB Series 2021 bill list dated April 20th, 2023, check numbers two one zero two nine to two one zero three one in the amount of $337,897.45 as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 McGuffey Middle School Academic Handbook as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Other than a shout out to Mr. Welk and his staff for putting it together, good job. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This is just information, Dr. Reber.
Yes, I have the pleasure to announce that tenure and permanent professional employee status has been earned by Megan Lawnich. Megan is our lunchroom music teacher for both Joe Walker and Claysville. This is a result of three consecutive years of satisfactory teaching within the McGuffey solution and fulfillment of her requirements.
Congratulations. I need a motion to authorize the administration to accept and expend the 2023 Food Service Equipment Grant in the amount of $20,620.58 per the terms and conditions of the grant application.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I have something I wanted to say. I had seen this earlier, and I think we failed to notice. We are very blessed. We've had many grants that have been submitted and received, and, and they're not always easy. They can be really challenging. I saw, this is great. I mean, and I, I just want to give a shout out to not just Mrs. Ingleman. This is a great job, but for everybody who does this grant writing and really helps us with our budgeting. Thank you.
In this case, while you're doing the budget.
Yes.
So above and beyond.
Thank you. Any other comments? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the request for the McGuffey Football Booster Club to host the following. One, the TCFCA High School Football Prospect Combine on Saturday, May 20th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to noon. Two, the McGuffey Football Booster request for use of the High School Fitness Center and Stadium on Saturday, June 10th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon for the purpose of a seven-on-seven tournament and line challenge. And three, the McGuffey Football Boosters to host a youth football camp at McGuffey Stadium on June 7th and 28th from 9:00 AM to noon for students entering grades one through eight.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Was security, um, given consideration? I mean, are we paying extra for this? Or was this already put in the budget or?
No, so, uh, again, any outside entity that uses our facilities, whether it be, uh, security, again, our policy is a hundred folks or more. And I would, I would say probably the first one would recognize at least a hundred.
Right.
That's on the folks that are renting out the space. They are responsible for that, for cleaners.
So we're not using our?
We will use our security, but we will build up.
Okay. That was my question.
Yeah, any group pays for it.
Yep.
Thank you.
The other, other question I have is, are we sure there's nothing else on the calendar for those days? Because I know we've had some problems with this in the past.
Without looking at, um, the counter system, I'm, I'm going to say that they, they took care of it, but I'll double check with Ed.
Okay.
Is it, are they charging, do they charge typically the youth football camp? Is there a fee for that?
That I don't know, Dave.
It usually's typically. We go to summer music camp. That was included in the, in this. I didn't know. It doesn't say in the, so maybe there's not. They may do it for free for the kids.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to accept a Visa gift card of $100 per McGuffey School District Policy Number 702 Gifts, Grants, and Donations.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Uh, no, but again, I see that Dr. Dothrón has gone out above and beyond, so thank you.
Thank you.
I tried to knock out the dollar, but it's staying in the top.
Those dollars add up too, so that's good. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I need a motion to accept the anonymous donation of, I think it's $1,000, to be applied to my, my eyes, I'm sorry, to the, um, student food services balance.
So moved. Second.
Nice donation.
Very nice donation.
Yes, very nice.
Thank you to whoever that is. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Just real quick, somebody has to know who that is. I hope we send that anonymous person an anonymous thank you.
Dr. Reber, do we have need of executive session?
Ma'am, present. We do for personnel and contract.
I make a motion, we go to executive session.
Second. So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are going to executive session at 7:08 PM.